Maybe, maybe. That's what I said. Let's just bite the bullet and get out of the door. No. Yeah.
This car's one of them.
Yeah, because the new cars, they have, it's called a cabin fresh. And it is, it's a dual.
It's already in?
That's already in the car. So perhaps they smell.
New.
But it's a reason why it's not.
You want. But yeah. No, that is true. Already, but you know, that is true. Oh, you've got to be. I'm not, I got. Obviously, I meant, no, I'll just tell them. I think I'll just write it. My paper says that I can do that. I'll get them later. Right, it's not in my budget anyway. It wasn't in my budget. Oh, here's my seat.
Right.
Oh. I'm kind, isn't Derek hiring you?
I don't mind. I didn't get to go to you for an hour.
Tell him, uh, I see very well.
Mr. Bill. You ready to go? See? Yeah, I only get it in the morning, so I left it in.
Okay, we'll do about another two minutes. And then after that, we'll just start. Okay, um, first of all, I'd like to thank everyone that came out. Even though it feels like Christmas outside. We don't have snow, we got rains. But I'd rather have the rain than the snow. So I just wanted to thank you for coming out. I know everyone has, everyone that I know has things to do. And I appreciate you voting this time to find out, get some information. For where you live, taxes you pay. And also being able to meet your neighbors. You never know who you may meet, may meet someone that could enhance. Or you may be able to enhance someone else's life. Just by talking to them. That's why I like that we can network, we can talk. And get a little information. I'm going to start off at the beginning. I usually start off with questions and we go into that. But I want to start off with a little information. And letting everyone know, or trying to let everyone know. The importance of coming up to your village hall meetings, asking questions. We just, we, as when I say we, elected officials work for you. You, you put us in this office and I hear a lot of people say, well, how come you're doing this? How come you're doing that? It's not, your village is ran by a votes. If you have the votes to make it happen, it happens. If you don't, then it goes the other way. But you, as a resident, as a voter, have the most power. If you come up and keep letting the elected officials know that this is what we want. Then that's what, if they plan on getting in office again, they should listen to that. If they don't plan on it, then okay, quite naturally, they're going to get out there and say, okay, they don't want to listen to us, they got in there for themselves. So that's something that you should think about when you're electing. Whoever it is that you decide to elect, do some homework. Enough of that part of it. We're getting ready to go into a very important season. And this is your budget season. I don't know if anybody, yet, the budget should be out. I heard that it was going to be published. What I mean by that, handed out. And let the residents, then we're going to have a meeting. I think it's going to be the first Saturday of, I'm sorry, the first Wednesday of May. Okay, that's why I love to have people there. Come to that meeting. That's the only time you get a chance to question, to ask questions. Not saying that they're going to vote your way. But at least you know what's going on. How your money is being spent. And that's when you ask questions. That's the time that you ask questions about the money that you're paying for your taxes. And where it's going and how it's being spent. But today, I mean, we could, I can always, I have the budget. I can always go over some things with you. Kind of enlighten you, let you know. I'm not here to give my opinion. I'm here to give you facts. You know, this is something that you can make a decision on. Or you can ask about, or you can question. It's just, you spend the money. This is your taxpayers. This is your money that you're spending. And you're entrusting it in or with the elected officials. Because once you put them in there, that's who passes the legislation. Is your trustees. The mayor doesn't vote. He compiles the information, runs it with his financial director. And then passes it on to us. There was a meeting this Wednesday. No, I'm sorry, last Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. And that's what was presented to us by the mayor. And that's what he came up with. Yes, it was back and forth, it's always, it always is. But ultimately, your trustees pass or reject the budget as you already know. In the state legislation and Congress and Senate. That's just presented, they make changes. Right now, with the state, we don't have a budget. And because both sides, or whoever it is. The governor doesn't have enough votes to pass it. So therefore, it's not passed. I mean, certain things are being done health and need, things that are needed. Sorry, it's salaries, things like that. But we don't have money coming in from the state unless it's absolutely necessary. Because they're holding it up. There's a lot of back and forth. There was a lot of things that were said that if the state representatives and the state senators don't come to an agreement, that they're not going to get paid. I mean, depends on who does what. They won't get paid. Maybe they'll get up and decide to make that happen. Because that's a long time for you not to have a budget. And money that we've worked, you know, to try to get here, we can't get it because they have to release it. And they won't release it until the budget is balanced. But there's some things in the budget. When you get a chance to look at it, you come up tomorrow and I'm sure they'll have copies. That you should really look at and try to compare. What they, what we did last year compared to what they're trying to do now. And as anyone knows, that comes up to the meetings, I didn't go along with that last one. And I see a lot of deficiencies in this one. So, but I'm one person. The residents need to come up and voice their opinion, not ask it. Because once it's voted in, that's it. Now, you can try to amend it. But you probably get the same votes that you got the last time. The people that did that, actually voted it in. So it's up to you to come out. And that's what I'm trying to stress at everyone about town hall meetings. Get involved, this is your money we're spending. Get involved in that. As you know, I don't know how many people know, but we're getting ready to hire five people. Few of them part timers, think two are full timers, and that's on the police side. So we're getting ready, get part timers for the front office. I have a little reservation on that. But like I said, that's just my personal opinion. But you should come and ask questions. First question you should ask is, can we afford it? Can we afford to hire someone? Every other week, we have to take money out of another fund just to pay payroll. Now you're going to increase payroll. Sooner or later, that fund you're taking that money out is going to be depleted. Not what you're going to do. Stand out there and ask somebody to give you some money so you can pay payroll? You budget that. You budget your money. I don't know how many people here live on their credit card. But that's basically what you're talking about doing. Living on your credit card until you have a chance. You floated the money until you have a chance to get some money back in. You're going to keep on using that. That money that we're using is supposed to be for higher tabs or for the public works. To do infrastructure repairs. To do fire hydrants. To purchase equipment that we need to do the job day to day. Not to pay somebody else's payroll. So those are some of the things that you can think about now. We get to the point of questions you can ask about those things. I'm just wanting to bring those things to you. The only way that you can enhance and bring a great community together is to get involved. Don't, and I'm glad I have a diverse group. Don't think that, okay, well, I'm this and they won't know. Salt Village, basically, basically, I've been out here 34 years. It's always been diverse. You don't learn that other stuff until you become grown. You see kids playing out together all the time. They get that segregation from at home. Because if you put a black and a white child together in third or fourth grade, they'll play. Take the same person and put them in high school. That's what happens when they get older, they get stupid. So it's not a black and white. It's basically right or wrong. We're not here to raise your children. But we're also not here to say, okay, this person here is this color and this other one, and they don't. You moved out here because you thought you had a better chance with less crime. What happened over the years? Two things. Programs stopped to slow down because we don't have the volunteers to help. And the one wants to get involved, but they don't have the time. You have to put time like you do anything else in order to make it happen. You have to put time to it. You just ain't come in, okay, everybody works. They come home from work their time. Okay, fine. But you're taking that time away and you're letting your child be monitored by the television. I'm not here to tell you what you should do. But if you want to make something happen, just get out there and do it together. It can happen. Believe me, it can happen. And those people that I call them, because I know I probably got 50 cameras on me, but I don't care. I call them stupid when they let color get in the way. Because everybody leaves red. So this community, believe it or not, knows how to make it happen together. But there's always a few that take it over for the men. You have to block that out. You're here because you wanted to be a little safer at the schools. To be better than what you have in the city. Because you came, a lot of us came from the city. We just didn't land right here in Salt Village. We came from the city. So that's why you moved out here. But we kind of get away from that them and they. Every time I hear that, I get mad. Because they are them. So there's no such thing as this person lives this way. That's the first thing you have to do. When you do that, you get involved, your community. Just because a person is a certain color, oh, here they come. No, no. This is your, this is your house. This is where you invested. Get involved with all of that. I'm not going to point fingers and say, we do it this. No, we all have to, we all here together. If something happened in this room right here, right now. It won't be well. They got blown up and they didn't know. If it happens, it's going to happen to all. We have to become a community again. Not a city of individuals. Not a political city. Because if you make it political, you won't have nothing. I'm a trustee, and I know that if you make it political, you won't have anything. Because they're going to try, they're trying to do what they want to do. So I'm just hoping and I'm glad that people, there are, there are a lot of people that live in the village that care about the village. But they have friends that say, why are you doing that for them? Why are you, are you talking to them? That's, then you have to stop that. You have to look at a person and judge it by what you see. By not by what somebody tells you, you should do. Ask that question, find out from that person. Whoever you may be, ask your neighbor. He may be the one that stopped you from getting robbed. Or the one that, if you fall or whatever, pick you up. So how can you walk past them? How can you judge them because someone else said? Got to stop that. I'm not trying to preach, I'm just trying to tell you the truth. Because you cannot live segregated. Believe me, I know. And there's a lot of people in here know, and they know. You can't do that. Together, you can, you can make it happen. But if you go out there as an island, that's exactly what you're having. Okay, that's my 10 minutes of standing on the soapbox. So I will entertain any questions. We can get it started, please. Don't, don't, how do I put it? Don't wait till 8:25 if you're going to ask questions. It's supposed to be, supposed to be over with. For the first ones that have never been here before, it's open mic. You ask what you want. If I can answer, fine. If I cannot, but like I said, I'm going to give you the factual answer. I'm not going to give you my opinion. Because my opinion is my opinion. I may see a lot of things that I feel that, that we don't, that we shouldn't do. But that's my opinion. But I'll tell you the fact of what it is. And we'll move from there. Because believe me, there's going to be a lot of people that have a lot of questions. Who's first? You don't matter, fine. But we're going to talk to everybody, okay?
I'd like you to explain what is going on with the equipment for the police department. It's supposed to be for 9/11, 9/11, and all of this.
Okay, the, we just found out yesterday that the computers have been installed in the cars.
And they're working?
Yes.
Yeah, it worked, that's it. Do they work?
They're having a problem, the computer's been installed. They're having a problem with the software being compatible to Calcom, which is located in Tatum Park. It's some type of glitch. This is what was explained to us yesterday. Some type of glitch, but the computer's been here since last year.
In other words, all this time, we have not been protected?
No.
We thought we had protection, we did not.
Oh, no, we have protection. But the computers weren't operable.
In other words, it wasn't working, so we weren't.
No, they were not working. But I hate to say that you depended on a computer for a police officer to come out. They have radios. But they can't look up certain things, like the old days, they used to call this dispatch, can you run a number for me? Can you run a plate for me and give me all the information? No, they weren't able to do that. They had to call in and then they had to come in over their walkie talkies. So they couldn't just do it in their car and pull it up, no.
Are they ever going to open up the police department at night in case we needed to go up there?
Plain and simple, no. They don't have the personnel to, we had, before we had dispatch. That's not, no longer exists. So we have to take a policeman off the, his beat or his territory, wherever he's at. If there's an arrest, a police officer has to be there. Because that person can't be in that, in the police department by himself. Somebody has to watch it just in case he does something.
Hold on, I have two. You mentioned the hiring of new people. And after last night's board meeting, I went home and I was thinking about it. And again, we're doing crazy things. We can't make payroll. The last two payrolls, money had to come out of the water fund. Yesterday, they discussed how to do it, what to do. Because they can't meet payroll for Friday. You've got approximately 13 part-time people that are supposedly going to be hired. God knows, we need them. But we're in a position to where we can't pay them. Or we're not going to be able to pay them. Or something else is going to happen. And I want to know something. If I work in a department and I'm let go because the village doesn't have enough money to pay me. And then they hire part-time people. The first thing I'm going to do is call a lawyer. Are any of these things looked at? You know, the village has got lawsuits from here to China. But a lot of those lawsuits didn't need to be. The village administrators created those lawsuits by doing stupid things. I don't, I would love to see every one of those people hired. But why would you hire them when you know? You might pay them their first payday, but I don't think you're going to make the second one. Secondly, as far as the police department goes and the, I don't understand, Mr. Burgess, trustee Burgess. When all of this came down about our dispatch, getting rid of them, getting Calcom. We're going to have state-of-the-art equipment with them. We're going to be on top of the world. So after it cost us a small fortune that we again don't have. I opposed this very strongly because I felt that it was going to cost us. And that they were sticking their heads in the sand or they were outright lying to us. And I said, you just got through upgrading our 911 and our equipment over here in Salt Village. And it costs taxpayers money. Now you want to dump that and go to Calcom. And our equipment is not going to be compatible with theirs. I was told, I didn't know what I was talking about. It would be compatible. Only takes some minor changes and we got it, we're in. As a matter of fact, the trustee that I talked to is sitting over there. And he told me, minor changes and it's, it'll be acceptable. Well, shortly after we did all this stuff and signed all the contracts and did whatever they have to do. Uh-oh, Salt Village and Calcom are not compatible. We spent close to $300,000 for software and computers to be compatible with Calcom. Now you're saying that the computers that have been installed are not compatible with Calcom. What the hell is going on and why not? Who made that mistake? And how many more mistakes aren't we aware of? This is again, more money that we don't have. That's all I wanted to say.
Okay. As I, first of all, Judy, we're not here to talk about another, special enough trustee or another elected official. Because I don't want to be in open meetings that. Violation. Because we have, we have, you know, you can meet with them after this meeting and talk to them one-on-one. But we're not here. And I don't want to talk about another official because they won't be able to. Because I know I wouldn't want that unless I'm able to defend what it is that I did. But I will tell you the facts. Payroll, first of all. $280,000 that we have to transfer from our water fund. Not just for payroll, for benefits, liabilities, and insurance. It's close to, to 80, close to 300,000. Now, this is the first time we had to do this, this much money. Been a while. We asked for other money and that's to pay other bills. Not to pay strictly payroll. In other words, if we don't get this money, we can't make payroll. There were other things that had to be voted out to pay liabilities, to pay bills that we've had for over a year. And to avoid going to court or whatever, we had to come up with it. Or to avoid not having that service, we're going to come, we have to come up with it. But this is the first time that payroll was added to that list. So that, these are the facts. As far as the computers in the cars, you're right. We were told that once we do the software, because we had to buy the computers. Had to get them right away. So we got the computers. They sat back there for seven, eight months. But we had the software right after that. Why the two didn't meet each other and it didn't happen? Have no idea. Why the two didn't meet each other and it didn't happen, I have no idea. Cause I was, we were told the same thing, that we gotta have this in order to be compatible with Calcom. We even went as far as to say, well, then why do we have to go to Calcom? They said, well, we'll save money because we don't have to pay payroll for dispatch. I'm waiting to see when we're gonna get to that point where we're gonna save money. Right now, we're spending, even though the wage is over there, on paper, it's a little cheaper, because we didn't have to do the upgrades and updates to our existing. But as you stated, and that's, Mr. Shattuck stated, that we don't have an officer. You can't walk up in, in there at two o'clock in the morning and say someone is chasing, that you have to ring a bell. Someone on the other end has to acknowledge who you are, open the first door. They see you, then open the second. Now, somebody's chasing you, guess what? So, you know, those are some of the pros and cons. But, on the flip side of that, within the next two years, you're gonna have regional services. You're gonna have a regional dispatch. You're gonna have, probably have regional police, cause that's what the state is doing, they only gonna, they give each and every department, each and every municipality, the state gives so much money. Even though you pay taxes, you pay it into a, a fund, and then they, then they give you, you know, each, each municipality, depending on how many people that they have there. But now they're cutting that back, because of those programs and things that they're, that they're doing. And how people are leaving Illinois, it's like South Village. Get people to leave, go get the tax money. Or you get someone to reevaluate their home, and it reevaluates at a lower price, it's less tax money. So a lot of this stuff is brought on also by your legislators downstate. So, I'm hoping that, you know, you, you come out and write it down now, ask those questions. If we can't pay payroll now, you're hiring X amount of people, it's not thirteen. It's three for the police, four, I'm sorry, one full-time and three part-timers for the police department. You have an HR, which is a human resources person that's gonna be hired here in the village. You have an accountant that's gonna be hired part-time, and third one, oh, okay, the third one would be someone up in the front office to help Cindy and Mike Barnicki. When they have to go, you know, and then they're gonna be doing that, so that's all that I know of. Now, you do have a couple of part-time, no, three part-timers, I'm sorry, you have three part-timers in public works right now, they already have been hired. So, we have to get this, all this stuff has to be taken care of through the unions. And that's gonna have to be something that should have been done, and quite naturally, it's gonna be a lot of back and forth. So who knows how long it's gonna happen, because you got to get the blessing from the unions, if not, you're going back to court. Who makes money in court? Lawyers. So, those are the questions that you should jot down and ask, when they have time to comment some questions from an audience, ask those questions. Put us on the spot, that's why you elected us. Ask those questions. Ask why we can't do this, ask why we can't do that, or just ask a question, period, if you have a question. But by saying nothing, people say, well, everything's okay, nobody asked me anything. Ask, that's what your taxpayer money is for. Okay, who's next? Oh, really? This'll be a quick meeting, I don't think it's gonna happen though. But does anyone, I'm sure someone else has some questions about the budget, about the village in the whole. Water is water, I mean, that's gonna come one day. But everybody's satisfied about how their streets, how this, you know, government is running. Uh, they have any questions about, uh, you do have a question, okay. They have any questions?
I'll leave Mike. Um, the budget hearing's Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday of last week. There's a public hearing coming up, correct, on May seventeen percent?
Yeah.
Is the public allowed to ask questions at that? Is there a three-minute time limit on that?
Nope. You wanna ask fifty questions, we have to stay there for fifty questions. This is your money, you just wanna know explanation. You can't vote, but you can talk to your legislators, which would be your elected officials, and let them know how you feel about stuff. But you at least, you're letting everyone know, cause there may be some things on there that they may, somebody that wants someone to know. Explain it to me, let me know that I'll be getting money from this particular line item. Or how are you able to cut this one, but yet still, you're hiring over here, those are the questions. You know, I'm not trying to coerce you into doing it, but everyone here that's a taxpayer has the right to ask those questions. The best time is when you got all the trustees up there. Make them do their work. If they can't get to you, ask to hold it up until I can get the answer, cause they should know. And the, and the employees that are here, they should know. Now, whether or not your department heads will be allowed to answer those questions, I doubt it. But you have a village administrator, you have the mayor, you have the trustees. Somebody should be able to answer that question before you leave out of there that night. I said a couple of new people. Anyone have, anyone have any, no one has questions? Okay, oh, okay, I thought you were gonna have it.
I just have a question about the streets. Are they going to, is there some kind of pothole fix that actually stays? I don't know about the rest of the village, I use Coronel a lot, simply because that's the easiest way to get in and out of where I live. And they have fixed those potholes. We've had a relatively nice winter, and they fixed it like maybe four times since last fall. And the hole, you can lose a car in again. And it's, as soon as they fix it, it's, it's the hole bad. And all you do is, you know, swerve around, and the people coming at you, swerving it around, so everybody's swerving, so there's gonna be an accident. And I don't use Jeffrey, simply because down by the mayor's house, it's like, they're like sinkholes. They're so bad, you cannot, you can't, you cannot even maneuver around them. So, is there, is there something out in there that, out, out in the world that can fix these holes, that they stay at least more than a month before we're losing tires and front-end alignments and everything?
Um, well, yes and no. Unfortunately, in the wintertime, when you put cold, when you put salt down. Salt melts the ice, or the snow, whatever it may be, but it also shrinks. So therefore, you got a frozen, you got a frozen residue of water on top of, then it shrinks. Now, you got the plow that comes across. And when that plow comes across, and you get this a little bit under, they pop it up. What is the solution? Cause we have, have the same problem where I'm at. The solution is to cut out that section where there are no seams. Then redo that section, so if it's a, if it's a five-foot by five-foot section, you wanna cut it out past any crack, so you don't let that water get underneath of there. Unfortunately, that's very rare, so you have to end up doing most of the street. And I don't know if anyone saw, but we just paid Gallagher forty-five thousand dollars that we just owe him. We just got to pay him from last year, July, forty-five thousand. What happened last year, now this is something that we, we knew, because last year, we didn't get any CDBG money. And that, and that money is usually helps take care of something like that, depending on where you work at, I'm sorry, live at. Cause CDBG goes by income. If it's an area that is actually regulated or acceptable from CDBG, then you can take that CDBG money and fix that. But ultimately, all of the fixes, all of the road repair comes from motor field tax. And you get that from every, that you know, the state, the state gets it, and they dole it out to the communities, according to population. That is the only time that we actually fix the streets, which I have a problem with that, because as you just said, throw some, throw some pads down there, you got too much traffic and heavy traffic, and then you have the public works trying to get the snow out. So if you're down, if you do attempt, you don't, but you don't want that ice there, so you gotta put something down there to melt it. And then ultimately, when you melt it, you change the temperature, and you get water under cracks, and as soon as it freezes again, it starts to pop up. And if a little bit just pops up, and a snowplow comes, it'll pop it up. So, what has to be done is it has to be cut out, that takes a little money. But you have to, you can't just do the repairs in the CDBG area. MFT money is supposed to be anywhere, you can fix it, but you have to schedule it. You have to schedule it, you, you see the sidewalks? The sidewalks are even just as bad, because what happens, somewhere underneath, underneath the ground, you got a leak. And what happened was that water got there and it sunk, sunk it in. That's, happens anywhere, but you have to address it. You have to address it, you know, we address your money every, every month, whenever we get it, so therefore, you gotta pour money back into it. Not just a little bit, but you have to throw it in it, you have to repair. But what happens if you don't pay these vendors that we get it from? They're not gonna come out and say, well, we'll fix that street, you can pay us a hundred thousand, whatever, no.
Another question, do we have an idea how much we are owed by the state? With all, with all this no-budget stuff, and, and the new, the next budget deadline's coming up in a month? So what are, you know, how do, how are we supposed to be living?
That's, that's why.
Without the, this funds?
That's why they're talking about doing a regional service. In other words, regional fire, regional police department, regional, anything that is paid through the state. They're trying to limit it, so they can just pay a place in the dispatch, just pay a place, and that's it. Like giving each town some money, they don't wanna do that. How much do we owe? I have no idea. I know it's over a couple of million. That the state owes us, I know that. Because we, we're getting, they just now started paying the village for property taxes. In the meantime, they weren't doing that, so we had to float, because we, I can't, you can't go up and tell a person, well, public works, you can't get paid, or police department, you can't get paid, cause we haven't got paid, that's not our fault, I mean, that's not their fault. You know, we have to make the stride to pay our people. As the worst thing you could ever do is not pay your, not pay your staff. How much work are you gonna get out of? I mean, have just be it real, I mean, you should have planned for that. Don't take it out of my pocket, you should have planned for that. You should have planned that we may or may not, that's why when you get paid at your job, you pay yourself. Just in case that hard time, and that hard time, it gonna come. You can't even walk up and ask, hey man, can you give me, can you give me six, seven hundred dollars, I can pay my mortgage? Look at you, looking crazy. You should have planned for that. So that's what I'm saying, you have to plan for things. Yes, they, they owe us a lot of money, but they owe all communities a lot of money, we're not the only one. So, it's just that, it's on you, it's incumbent upon you to make sure that you have something. What do they say, I think they say you should have at least six months in your bank account, when you work, at least six months. In case something happens, you don't have a job, or you get between jobs, you're not out there on the street. I used to have somebody do this on me, but.
Uh, trustee, what is the budget and finance committee's role in bringing forth the budget? Uh, that's question one. And question two, before there were budget problems in the state not paying us, how many instances do you remember that we weren't able to make payroll without borrowing from water fun?
I'm gonna take the second one first. How many times has I been a trustee that we weren't able to make payroll? I've been trustee for about ten years. Don't, don't quote me exact, but I think it's four times, that we weren't able to make payroll without borrowing. Everything else, like I said before, was paying services, insurance, benefits, but it was never payroll. So it was about four times that we had to actually borrow for payroll, everything else was other things, that we hadn't paid in so long, and they were getting disconnected. You know, and we had to have, we didn't have the money, we had to pay it right then and there. Now, the first one, what is the budget and finance?
Yeah, what is their role in?
Okay. There's a, I, me myself, I think it's a redundant, a redundant committee. Why do I need somebody to go and talk to the finance chairman, that's when he comes and talks to the board? Um, we, we've always had a financial director, and we would, we're not, this is not the first time we, you know, asked him all these questions, cause we wanna know, we don't know. So that's what it is. Supposedly, the budget and finance is supposed to be the buffer between the trustees and the budget with a financial director, which I don't think he needs a buffer, either we have it or we don't have it. They're not gonna break any money in, and they're definitely not gonna roll any money out. But things have been changed, policies have been changed here this last year or so, that they, if you have under a thousand dollars, the budget and finance committee can okay that. Anything goes with that, then you have to go to the board. And you're quite naturally, when something like this happens, they have to definitely go to the board, and they, and they have to have a vote. And also, you should have, because when you take money out of different funds, you should have accountability, something in writing. Cause when you go remember last year, yeah, I took it out, but I forgot mine. But if you have it in writing, then you know you took out X amount of money to pay such and such, cause things happen. It's not, it's not, it's not a catastrophe, but things happen. And you have to plan for the inevitable, you have to plan for, you know, what may or may not happen. If you don't have a, a plan, then you have, you got a problem. So it's not, that was created by the mayor to have someone, cause I used to be basically the liaison between the finance and the finance director and, and the trustees, but, and I used to ask, you know, go back to the finance director and ask him questions. I did find a couple of things that it was, mistakes were made, but then I'm not doing that anymore, I'm on the public works, so.
Uh, last question. What is the similarities or differences between the finance director's position and the village treasurer's position? And also, do you foresee us hiring another village treasurer anytime soon?
You have to have a village treasurer. You have to have a person in that capacity. Now, it's not what you think it is, the village treasurer is just, is there for accountability. He cannot write a check by himself, nor can he spend money by himself. But he's basically there for accounting purposes, that you have someone that's supposed to overlook the finance. Finance director tells you, his job is to tell you as a board, we don't have the money. So, when you, when you try to sit up and say, we're gonna have this party, we're gonna have that party, he's the one that comes to say, oh, you don't have the money for that. Cause he's already talked to the village administrator, and he also talked to the payroll clerk, and knows if we, he knows how much money we have or don't have. The village finance director, his job is to make sure that we don't overspend. Don't even think about bringing that to a vote, you wanna, you wanna vote out ten thousand dollars, we got a thousand. And then you say, well, we're gonna get so and such, no. We don't have a, but a thousand, we don't spend but a thousand. That's how you get, as they call it, aging report a debt service, cause you spent more than what you have, hoping that you're gonna get that money. And when it doesn't come, guess what, it goes into that drawer where all the other aging reports are, to be paid at a later date. But in the meantime, here's the kicker, that's to be paid at a later date. However, I gotta get this right now for something, I don't pay, I'll pay that when, when I get the big money, if I get it, but I gotta pay this right now. Payroll should be the only thing that you have to pay. Everything else, don't do it, you don't have the money to do it, don't do it. Fix it, whatever you have to do, but don't keep spending what you don't have, you can't run the village on a credit card. You're gonna pay that piper, you're gonna, you're damn. You gonna pay that paper. You going, you dancing now, but you gonna pay the paper. It's gonna come. You don't wanna get to the point where your credit card is maxed out now, where do you go? So you have, finances is a very important thing with any village. So, you know, it's not that you don't need, because it doesn't cost anything to have a finance committee. Because they're the trustees or whoever that's not getting paid. That's not a draw. But they should find out and bring it back to the board before we vote on it. To say, we don't have the money. Not what you wanna do. I'm, I'm doing what you asked me to do. I, I, I was there monitoring what we have, what don't have. My suggestion, as you put me in that spot that we can't pay that, we can't do that. So that's, that's their job. But I don't think you need it because the financial director should come back and tell you, hey guys, we don't have the money. Now, if you do it, I want you to, to, to vote on it. Well, I have a record that you. I told you, you don't have it. You gonna pay it anyway? Fine. That keeps me out of harm's way. But going to these different funds, those funds were there for a reason. You got the water sewer is not a piggy bank for, for the village. They're there to enhance. Supposed to be out there enhancing the village with the water sewer and public uh buildings. Not talking about, well, I know the ceiling is about to fall, but right now, we don't have the money right now. But we can go spend it on fireworks. So those are some of the things. If you run it right, yes, it's tight. It is very tight to run a village, especially if you don't have any money, but you can still run it.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Uh, when a property becomes vacant, who is responsible for the upkeep, like the lawn?
Somebody owns that property. Somebody left out, somebody uh walked away, got foreclosed on. Bank, somebody, some financial institution owns that. If they don't comply, they do like any other resident, they get ticketed.
So what do we, in the meantime, is a saw across the street from me?
I'm not trying to be facetious, but come up here. No, I'm sorry. Come up to the village hall and let them know. They may not, we got one person doing code one. She gonna see so much. Come up here and say, hey man, this is, I'm out here paying my taxes. This looks like whatever. I know you're giving them tickets. But in the meantime, ticks and everything else that's coming out there, I want, I want something done.
Okay, um we have a, I live in Deer Creek and we also have a association, right? Okay, the, the last time when that park was overgrown, they spent a lot of money and got it.
You, you spent a lot of money because they go.
We all, yeah.
Okay.
And cut, you know, cut the grass down and the bushes. Now, why can't they, why when a property become vacant, at least can the association maintain the, at least the lawn or the grass? That the place look good? It's uh, it's showing up in good right now.
Well, okay, I know you're, you're new out there, but the assoc, the debt association or Deer Creek owns that land. We brought it from the builder that built all those homes. So we have to maintain that. That's why we have dues. That's why dues are created. I know everybody don't wanna hear that because I'm talking about one specific, but I just wanted to try to let you know. That's not owned by the village. That's owned by private entity, which is the, the, the homes that, that people that live there. You have to take it up with the association, why the grass is high or why, um, you know, because it is high. All that land back there, about six, seven acres, is not maintained because, like I said, I don't wanna go back and forth because this is Deer Creek. And, but it's owned and supposed to be taken care of by the owners or the homeowners that are there. The village has nothing to do with that. The village has something to do with your house. If you don't cut your grass, you gonna get a ticket. If you park your car, which I go by, every day I have to laugh because I just go by there, chee chee. People leave their cars out doing garbage day. That's automatic ticket. And believe me, they're gonna write it because that's automatic money. So if you can push your car into the driveway or what, despite covering it, it's not gonna help it. If it's physically in the street on garbage day, you will get a ticket. If it's physically, and I haven't seen them do it a lot, in there after two inches of snow, you're gonna get a ticket. But the only reason why you don't get it is all because we only got one person doing it. So, but when it, when that does happen and we can do that, then it'll change.
Yeah, but what I'm in the meantime, and it's deer right now, it doesn't look good. Uh, every time I wake up, it's just right there. It's, it look green turtle.
I bet you can ask all these people that are here, do they have homes that, have you ever been on this side of the village? Okay, ask them after the meeting is over with, how many homes do they see that grass is up here? They're about to fall down. The houses are not kept up. It takes a process. It's not overnight process. It takes a process to make it happen. You can call and tell them to do this, but they gotta make it thirty-five other homes that they gotta, they gotta go to. So it, it's a matter of doing the job or, or not, but it's. I'll put it this way, you're fortunate over there because over here, every block, somewhere in that block has a home that's not being kept up. Or nowhere living. There's a lot of abandoned homes in the village, a lot. Just don't have the manpower to keep up with it. You just have to keep, people found a way to divert paying ta, I mean, paying their uh bills. We have to do it now on the tickets that is gonna be connected to your paycheck.
You live, you live in, you live in Deer Creek, right?
Yeah.
Okay. What I suggest, we all live there and we all need to keep the place beautiful, right?
Okay.
So you know what I'm gonna do? I'm gonna be the first one to cut it. And we have to get some volunteer, keep it going.
That's another way. That's a good way.
Okay.
Now, this way, you, you have it, but you still have to go after that homeowner because, or the property owner. Because if you keep doing that, then they'll, they'll just look at you, you know, you have to let, you have to put pressure on that, on that property owner to do it. If it's not enough pressure, they keep on, it'd be like, okay, well, so thank you. Thank you for cutting. That's when the village goes after, they find them big times. If they have to cut your grass, they find them five hundred dollars. So, I mean, I know you don't wanna hear that, but that's what happens in any municipality, not just Deer Creek. It happens in any municipality. You saw, they're not gonna dispatch. They'll get around to Deer Creek. But they got, like I said, a couple of hundred, if not seven, eight hundred homes in some villages that look like that.
So, so you say the association is supposed to take your ass?
Association should.
Yeah, they should.
They should. I mean, you live, your neighbors, you, anyone that lives there should come together and say, hey, we're not gonna wait on the village, but I can't make that, we can't.
But the association, we pay them dues. You know, just like all the fine time to cut that big property over there. That's spend a lot of money, thousands of dollars.
To do what?
To cut, by, by the playground.
Oh, um, but then, okay, but that's, I think it's having a meeting next month at the beginning of the month, Deer Creek Homeowners Association. So if you wanna come, we'll let you know when it is. I personally will knock on your door and let you know when that meeting is. And then when you come there, you can, because right now, we have a hundred and twenty-one homes. Twenty people are in the association. Now you tell me, twenty. And that's not just there, that's people don't come out. You say, well, you don't, but come to the meetings, see what happens. There's not gonna be, you can't press a button and say that this is gonna happen right now. It would be nice, but you, that's who, like I was saying earlier, I think you haven't gotten there yet. Your town depends upon your residents, not the other way around. Not the other way around. It depends on your residents. Get out there and start doing. And when you start doing, maybe the other ones will get involved. Because that's what we used to do. They may need, need, do you need help cut their grass? Does it not look right? Makes my house go. Your house could be the most beautiful house in the village. But it's not worth what, what your next door neighbors is. If everybody thought that, then maybe you would. But a lot of people say, hey, that's not mine. I'm not gonna do it. And it, it's, it's harsh, but it's the truth. It is not gonna get involved. You out there cutting, no, you doing out there. I'll, I'll wait on you. Until something happens to them, until someone breaks in their house. Did you see it? Nope. So, I'm not being facetious. I'm just telling you how it is.
Okay, I just wanna say, um, I used to be the treasurer for Deer Creek Estates, for the homeowners association. The only thing the association does is the park. Dues used to be more than they are now, if I'm not mistaken. People, because it's not mandatory, were not in the association. So basically, the association is only to take care of the park because it is a private park. Which means nobody but the homeowners that are actually in the association should be using the park. As far as the grass goes for other houses, uh, a few years ago, there was a house right around me whose grass was high. Um, it was a foreclosed home and the neighbors actually, one of them is here. He and the neighbor on the other side, so the house was in the middle. He lived on one side and the other guy lived on the other side. They took turns. Every week, one of them would cut the grass while they were out there cutting theirs. I mean, because the village is supposed to take care of that, like you said, the tickets. But as far as the association, it's just for the park. And we tried to do the upkeep on the swings and stuff with the kids. We had basketball. But nobody's joining the association. Nobody's paying dues. So there's no money.
But if the association is just for the park, people don't have interest. That's, that's all reason.
But there's nobody in the association. Nobody's paying dues. Like you said, I think there's only twenty houses.
If you're not interested, if it's just a park, you don't pay dues just to maintain the park and go maintain and stuff like what's happening now, why do you pay dues?
Well, the thing is, I mean, if nobody's paying dues, there is no money to get somebody to do that. So the thing is, if nobody cares and nobody, uh, again, like I said, the, the gentlemen to care that, that one yard. If nobody else is willing to do that and nobody's willing to pay the association fees to even be able to do. We talked about that a long time ago, paying the association fees. And if we did the park, maybe we can get snow removal or something else. Because people complain, why the park, why the park? The other thing is, again, it's a public park. Nobody can come in and use the park unless you're a home, um, you belong in the association or you have company. But other than that, nobody should be in there using the park because it's a private park. So, I mean, and, and if we don't maintain it, then the village can maintain it, which means you can have anything and everybody up in there, which I don't think you want that. And I, I was just gonna say, all our trees in Deer Creek are dead. When are they coming down? Because I've heard that for like two years now.
Those are ash trees and I don't know why the builder put them up. Because they were very susceptible to ants and now ash, emerald ash boards. They killed the tree from inside out. You're right, ninety-five percent of them are, are garbage. However. Yeah, maybe two thousand over here, you do the math.
Okay, so when our trees are gonna get cut down? That was my question.
Okay.
Because I've heard for two years, they were gonna.
Yeah, but I mean, they have a lot over here. If you, you could kinda judge if the.
Okay, but we pay like ten thousand dollars in um property taxes. Come on.
Do, do they come out to the meeting? The people that, that own those homes over in Deer Creek, do they come out to the meeting to let the officials know that, hey, we pay X amount? You're one person. Where's the rest of them that live out there in Deer Creek? And they have that problem, come out and express their opinion. That's what happens. If they don't come out, then I'm gonna take care of the squeaking wheel. I'm, but, but if you, I don't care how much you pay. That's nice. Thank you very much. Appreciate your money. But if you don't come out and advocate for what it is that you have, move on. They're gonna go after the one that's coming out every month, every, every two weeks or whatever to come out and complain. They're gonna go after that person because they keep coming out and you keep not doing nothing. First thing they're gonna do is, oh, we gotta do something because they keep embarrassing us. So that's what you have, you have to be tenacious. You have to keep, keep at it. Like I said, you only have a few people from Deer Creek here. You have more at this meeting today than you did yesterday.
Mm-hmm, very true.
Okay, so that's, that's what I'm saying. So, but, and they will listen because they don't want to see you come in there next week. Oh, here you come. Get ready to talk. You're gonna embarrass me. Let everybody know that I've been coming for the last six months and you haven't done nothing. So, and it's good that you come out, but you have to continue to keep, you have to continue to keep hitting that until, until the cracks, until you open it up. Yes, you are paying. Average home in Deer Creek is about eight thousand dollars a year in taxes. The average home. That means you got some above, some below, but the average home is eight thousand dollars a year. That's close to what? Eight hundred dollars a month?
Yeah.
That will never go down. So it's their money. They don't wanna come out and advocate and get mad at it. You can't, you can't get mad at the village. You really, you can't.
They're using my money.
Well.
And they ain't doing nothing for it, is the other thing.
You gotta do something. You gotta come out and complain. If you come out and complain, then like I said, squeaking wheel to hit the most oil.
Okay, one more question.
Sure.
So, I was here for the budget meetings. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I could have swore they're putting money into budget that isn't there because they think they're gonna get it. So should I live my life on overtime? Should I bank it or think I'm gonna make, you know, a thousand dollars in overtime the next month so I can go out and spend it this month? That doesn't make any sense. I think you all need a new, um, finance director and all that stuff because, and what's his name? Why does he scratch stuff off and put in his own numbers? You should have some kind of system. That just, and then the payroll. First of all, why can't you, you know what payroll is every week? Why don't you have that already so you have it a month? And then if there's overtime, maybe you can skip a week. So in other words, you're getting paid overtime the following week for the previous week that you worked it. That way you know what your budget is and you're not waiting till the last minute and you're asking, what's the amount? And nobody knows. How is that? How can you not know?
Okay, and you're, you're right because I couldn't understand it either. Most people, most jobs pay you always keep a week. In other words, the one that you have, even if you get paid every.
Mine doesn't, but the overtime is. So in other words, if I was to work overtime, I'm paid so like on the end of the month, I'll be paid.
If, if, if you get paid up to, say your cutoff point is Sunday, you get paid to something?
Yes, but the overtime, the overtime will not be paid till next week. But you know what you're paying, right?
But I mean, do you get paid every two weeks or every week?
Twice a month.
Okay, that's every two weeks. So what happens is the money, okay, you worked, say your cutoff day is Sunday.
Right.
So Monday, they start a new pay period. When you get paid that following Friday, it's not for the last week, it's for the week before that and those two weeks before that. In other words, you get, they always hold one week. The village holds one week.
Not mine. Tomorrow, tomorrow's payday, I will be paid from the sixteenth through the twenty-ninth. Now, if I had any overtime from the sixteen through the twenty-ninth, I won't get paid for that until the following pay period.
But here, here you're getting paid for just one week and they hold a week. So you should.
So then, how do you still not know?
You should know how much payroll is when it comes time to turn that in because that's what, pay, now, anything that you accumulated the following week, right before that, goes to, goes to the next.
Right, so how can you not know?
I can't answer that one, but that's what it's supposed to be. And you're right. If I paid payroll for the last five years, I know how much payroll is. I have an idea how much it is. And you're absolutely right. If it's gonna be overtime mixed in that, okay. You still should have a ballpark figure, not wait till tomorrow, because that's, to me, that's a, a tactic that you're using. That's a bully tactic. So therefore, if you don't pay, then you, as a trustee, say, I don't wanna pay payroll. Now, it gets out there, oh, you don't wanna pay us to work. What kind of stuff is this? You know, so, but I will quote you. And you will get a chance to come out, the expenditures for last, I'm sorry, the revenue from last. The expenditures for last, I'm sorry, the revenue from last, um, budget, which ended, um, well, will, will end in the end of May. But right now, we budgeted last fiscal year for six point four million dollars of revenue coming in. That's what we look, we budgeted for. So far to date, which is about thirty days left in the budget, we have collected five point five million dollars, which means you're close to a million dollars right there. What's proposed is six point three, which tells me it's only a hundred thousand less that they took off. Which, that's not gonna happen. You have less people, you have more, um, um, what do you call it, renters? You have a lot, a lot of homes that are abandoned and you're getting no money from. And you could budget almost the same you did last year. So those are some of the things that I've been arguing about, and if you come out to the budget meeting, you're gonna hear it again. You can't tell me that you, that you're gonna get in more money with less people. That's pretty good, I, I know how to do that. Those are just some of the things that you should know, that's what trustees are for, to make sure, like you stated, to make sure that you're close. Just because I want to cut something, make it look good, you look at what you brought in last year, you look at what you spent last year. Unless you got a second job, or you know some money's coming from somewhere, you spent close to what you spent last year. This way, you can either not be as much in debt, or guess what? You can miraculously save some money. And then take that toward the money that you owe somewhere. But there's nothing in this budget that says they're gonna pay off the debt that we owe. Nothing in the budget. Those are the questions I ask, where is it that we owe X amount of money? How are we gonna pay that off? Keep going, keep going, keep going, pounding it up sooner or later. It's, it's not, it's, you're gonna end up owing more. You can't go get a tire fixed, because the neighbors out there. So, those are some of the things that we should be, well, that's gonna say "we", but you guys should be aware of. I'm just bringing back the information, because you elected me to toothpaste. But I'm a home, a homeowner and a taxpayer too, pay a lot of taxes. That was one of the reasons why I ran, so I want to see what my, what you doing with my money? I don't care. That's just me.
I hate to see their home financed. I heard that, foreclosures and, and all that bankruptcy come from.
Who's next? If this is a personal question, I will not answer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I got a few questions about that Deer Creek deal. I, uh, the taxes you pay over there, they're eight, ten thousand dollars, yeah? Those houses over there average around four thousand square feet.
Wait, what, you said, I'm gonna back up, you said, back up. You said they're not what?
The taxes you're saying, it's like eight thousand dollars.
Who told you that?
Just now.
I said average.
Okay, average.
That means there's some more, some less.
Okay, the average is eight thousand. Do you also, the average is what, three thousand, thirty-five hundred square feet for an average home over there?
No.
What's the average of that?
I, they don't charge, they charge, as a matter of fact, they go up because of what the surround, your taxes. Your taxes are based on your surroundings. That's how they do it in the state. That's not based on just because of how many square feet, no it's not. It's based on, it's based on the comp, comparable prices around your area.
That's because these houses that you're living in are ten years old, they're brick, they're, uh, they're size of...
No, the houses that you live in are nineteen years old, sir.
How old are they?
Mine is twenty. My house is twenty years old. I was built in, in two thousand sixteen.
My house is...
I mean, two thousand and six.
My house is over six...
I'm sorry, nineteen ninety-six, I'm, 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 nineteen ninety-six.
Okay, my house is like over sixty years old, it's only a thousand square feet.
Okay, what's your point?
It's not brick, that's why I'm not taking eight thousand dollars.
No, sir, my house is not brick either.
Well...
No, but you, you're saying something, I'm just trying to correct you. It's not a matter of your house is brick, or vinyl, or what it would, it's done by the comps. Wherever area, the area is, if we were comparable to overhead, it would be, it would be anything.
That's what I'm talking about.
So what does that mean?
When you live over at Deer Creek, you live in a new neighborhood, is it...
No, it's not. So you're saying I'm getting penalized out of Deer Creek?
It's not penalized, it's just that it's what you're living in. That's the establishment, by the neighborhood you live in, that's what you're, you're saying. If you listen to what you're saying.
I know what I'm saying. I'm saying that the taxes over there, that's the price of them.
That's right.
Okay, I knew that when I moved there.
Cook County and the state...
I'm not complaining, but you got two...
The what? What you saying, you're not complaining? You're complaining about you paying taxes, everyone pays taxes.
No, I'm complaining that I'm gonna watch my money. I don't know about you, but when I pay that kind of money, I'm gonna follow, I'm gonna follow my money to find out what someone else is doing with it. And if I don't agree with it, I don't even have to be a trustee. If I don't agree with it, I'm gonna come up and tell you why, you spending this on this. Because it's, we paid, those taxes, we knew we paid those taxes. When you get through the day, you gotta tell the people, they can tell you exactly. They will stop me if I, if I tell a lie, because that's the way they are.
The taxes are decided by Cook County and the state president.
They are, they go uncomparable, sir. You can have a, you can have a thousand, you can have thousands of square foot home and still pay ten thousand dollars, depending on where you live.
Yeah, this is true.
So it doesn't, doesn't matter, you got homes that have seven hundred square feet. Seven hundred square feet, and they pay ten thousand dollars.
All right, I got another question about Eddie that park. Somebody owns that park, apparently the association?
The homeowners. Not the association, the homeowners.
What makes them not maintain it? Because they own it?
No, sir. Who said, no? The reason, who said they don't maintain it?
Apparently the grass is, apparently the grass is growing.
There's nobody who's done the grass. The boroughs don't, the boroughs don't do anything to that, to that, to that property.
I understand that.
Okay, and so, it's owned by the, uh, not the association, the homeowners.
By the homeowners, yeah, so there's someone that owns it, someone, someone has a name on it. It's not just out here in the air somewhere, someone has anyone on it.
The, the subdivision.
Well, the subdivision, the district responsible for maintaining it, if you like.
We didn't say, but, but we didn't say nothing about, say nothing about that. I'm saying that the grass, they need to get involved. They need to get involved, that enhances their property.
I'm confused at what you're doing there, that's all, that's all I can tell you.
I don't know what you're confused about, it's cut and dry.
Derek, I have a question. Um, this is regarding, um, the arrest of Greagle, the village treasurer. I don't know if you can comment, comment on it or not? But what has changed between January and this week? Because the end of January, there was, at a meeting, the mayor read a statement. Um, what happened between January and this week, when the mayor said he cannot remove Greagle because he hadn't been convicted of a crime? He still only remains accused by the feds. He was indicted by a complaint. What has changed? Can you answer that or not?
The advice of counsel, that's what changed. That's why he couldn't say anything, because counsel instructed him not to. But, right now, he's not a employee anymore, so his, um, pay has stopped. He's not an employee. Pardon me?
When did that happen?
What's the day? Tuesday, um, day's Wednesday, uh, first of the, first of the week. That's what, that's what it was read yesterday. Who was that? Who got the mic? Oh.
I guess ladies first, go ahead.
I just want to say the youth open gym will be Saturday, April thirtieth, from eleven to three. All youth under the age of nine must be accompanied by adults, and concession stand will be open. As well as, we'll be having a youth summer camp registration there, it's from twelve to two. And the fee for that is... I think it's fifty for registration, I'm not sure. But, they have the summer registration there for summer camp.
Okay, um, everyone, um, trustee Jones is right there, so after the meeting, get in touch with him because this program, this, this, um, summer program that he's trying to start and trying to get going is very, very beneficial. If you, when he gets a chance to tell you just what you have to pay, there's gonna be a line out there. I hope he got enough volunteers to accompany them, because there's gonna be a line. But I want him to, after the meeting, he's not going anywhere, you can ask him about it. Uh, but that, by all means, come out Saturday and witness for yourself.
What I would suggest for you, for you, we had a foreclosure on our block, and me and three neighbors, actually three, Mr. Wyman, we cut that property all summer, and just to make the neighborhood look good. It's something I'll never get back, but I would suggest getting together with one of your closest neighbors and, and doing that. Because I know this eyesore, keep the rotors down or whatever, you know, it just, it just looks bad. I'm just putting that out there.
I cut one next quarter into, at seventy-six. I can do it, I can do it.
Yeah, kudos, like I said, would never get that time and energy back, but it's kind of something. I did, and, you know, that's just me.
I would give it a couple of times, well, I'm saying, we got an association there where we can do.
Well, association really has nothing to do with it, it's just that we took it upon ourselves, because we have a real nice block, and like I said, the three of us, we did it, and it was the whole suffering. I mean, it's something you just do. I mean, you don't have to, but I'm just putting it out there. But the first time, we all jumped on it and we just took turns.
Keep it going.
Oh, okay. Then after that, I got a, um, schedule for, from Public Works for the village. I'm gonna read that, um, but go ahead.
Yesterday, while I was out running around, I, uh, I stopped for lunch. And there were a small group of men and women having lunch, and, uh, my ears perked up when I heard the word Saw Village. And you're always wondering, you know, uh-oh, what are they gonna say? And I have to tell you, I know one of the, by, I don't know him personally, but I know him by seeing him, that he's a firefighter from another town. And they were talking about the fires at Saw Village. At, um, the trailer park over here, and on Peterson. I, I have to tell you, I, I felt so proud. They, they had nothing but good things to say about our firefighters, our department, and how they worked with them. And you're always hearing the negative side of what's going on. And, um, I know we're getting a new fire truck, but they deserve it. Um, and they've got the money for it, they, they... I think they're awesome, I really do. And it's sad that the village is in the shape it's in. But I just needed to tell you that, uh, I, I couldn't say anything, I don't know these people, but it made me proud. And it's been a long time. And I've lived here over fifty years, and it's been a long time since I felt proud of this town. But I did yesterday, because of our fire department. So, that's it, Derek.
Okay, um, just a quick reminder, you can kind of write these down if you want. Um, street sweeping. Street sweeping will take place the week of April eleventh, is once a month. April ninth, I'm sorry, April eleventh, May ninth, June thirteenth, July eleventh, August eighth, September twelfth, and October tenth. So I guess they're gonna do each one of those, uh, areas, but they're gonna start on those dates. And if you need copies, uh, let me know after the meeting, I can run back there and make some copies for you.
Derek, are they no longer going to, uh, do the street like in the past? If Friday's your garbage pickup day, they sweep the street?
That's what I'm saying, the week of, so this way, they may not get to your house the tenth, yours may be the same, in other words, it'll be the day that you're, that's how they usually, um, split it up, the day that you get, pick up garbage. But there's other areas that, uh, they pick up garbage too, so it may be, that particular one may, because you only have one street sweeper. So does anyone, I always like to ask this question, has anyone ever seen a street sweeper out? Two, three? Has anyone ever seen the street sweeper out? In other words, I'm... One, two, three? That's, that's it, four, five? Okay. Seems to be everybody that's retired, anyway.
I just have to be home.
Oh. Usually that's what they do, do it a day early before you, before you, uh, get on for work. Yeah, that, that's what, we, we, everyone knows, we purchased that street, street sweep a few years back, and it's always, it's been great. Next big issue, hydrant flushing. See if I get the same amount of people say. Um, April fifth, which is past, May third. April fifth, it is for the south side of town, in the south of Saw Trail. April fifth, it was, the south side of town, south of Saw Trail, west of Torrance Avenue, extending to, uh, Deer Creek. So that's everything from Torrance Avenue all the way to Deer Creek, south of, um, Saw Trail.
I have a neighbor that lives in the first house in my development, who looks at this table, did not see, and they were home all week, and did not see anybody from...
Has anybody here not seen, flush it, has not seen?
Hydrants.
Hydrants, sorry, hydrant flushing, two? So who else is three? So what, four?
Usually you can tell it's the street, and your water's bad, so you can't wash your toilet.
Because I would like to put out there, like we, like I see in other towns, in your area, let you, let the, let the residents know there will be flushing your, your hydrants this day. Now, I don't know if they've been able to explain to you, but when you get your hydrant flushed in your area, do not cut on your hot water. I mean, when you come home, cut on the cold water, and then let it run. If you have a two-story, do it at the top first. Because you don't want to put your hot water on because it'll fill back up with that sediment that's in there, that's in there because you're stirring it up. It's just like, um, put gas in your car and you see the, the, uh, the guy just put gas in the tank, drive by that one, because he stirred up everything and it gets to your eject, it's now you got problems. So I mean, I don't know if anybody knows, but that's one of the things, if you see the, the gas truck at that particular station, don't even, just move on. So, just FYI. Um, May third, north side of town, north of Saw Trail, extended to Carolina Estates. Uh, June seventh, eastern section of town, located east of Torrance Avenue and south of Saw Trail. That's on the other side of Torrance over, what they used to call, uh, St. James Estates two, I think it was. I used to live over there. And then July fifth, the south side of town, south of Saw Trail, and west of Torrance Avenue. Now, so that means they're gonna, between April and July, they should, you should have, you should have had your, uh, fire hydrants flushed twice. Yes?
I have a question for the people in Deer Creek, I don't know it. When you get your hydrants flushed, what evidence should you see that tells you...
The first thing, like I said, the first thing you should do is see the rust color in the, and, uh, when you come home, it's not gonna get away that quick. You should be able to see the rust color on the street, should be like a reddish color. And, that's why I wanted to, and I'm gonna talk to, uh, Kevin Weller about securing signs that we can have it in, in different locations, and let the people know that that next day they're flushing your area. I'm not, no, we don't have that sign, I'm saying we should do it.
I, I'm not talking about the sign, I'm talking about no rust. I remember years ago, I turned on my water and it appeared to all brown. I remember years ago, I turned on my water and it appeared it's all brown. I ain't seen that in years.
They used to flush our hydrants early in the morning, like seven, seven-
That's when they should do it.
And then you, it would be all day long along the gutter, it would be red.
Right.
So I've got the drain in front of my house, so it would run right into, and, and right there at my house, 'cause the drain of hydrant is in my, in front of my next door neighbor's house.
So you guys are saying you never saw the rest of the street?
I haven't seen it in years.
You've probably been years.
Then that means they're not flushing. But it still should last at least two, three days. I mean, you're not, unless you're sitting out there scrubbing, it's not, it's gonna stay there for a couple of days at least. That, that's a telltale sign, I don't know, is anyone here from, um, Lincoln Valley? Okay, 'cause they have a unique problem. Um, August second, what was the question, I thought I did. Okay. That's what I said, if you haven't seen it, it hasn't been flushed. It's a piece of paper. I mean, all I can do is look at what they put here, I, I, I'm not out there flushing. Then you should come up here. Yes, if things don't happen like you think they should, that's what the villagers is for, come back, they don't know, you sit at home and don't say nothing, I'm drunk. No, you, not that, no, it's, it's towards me, I don't flush the street. Come up and talk to someone at the front office and let them know the problem, that's what you should do, don't just, just, just do it and don't, and don't take care of it. Um, tree pickup, this is important, 'cause you do know, um, they, they actually pick up trees in front of your house. There was someone that had trees sitting out in front of their house for a couple of months. And it took them coming up here or took them just leaning over and saying, hey, you have picked, knocked it down, but you didn't pick it up. As I stated before, if you don't say something, it gets lost in translation or whatever you want to, you have to constantly say, that's, that's, that's anywhere, that's not just Saw Village, that's anywhere. Sweeping will get the most grease. So then, I'm not up at the front office. Okay, our tree limb pickup is gonna begin May second and end May thirteenth. You're asked to put your limbs out no later than May eighth on the curb. If May fourteenth comes, or May, that following Monday comes and those are out there, make that call. Make that phone call and continue to make that phone call and then come up here and say, I made the phone, now you have a, you have a trace, you have something that you say, hey, I've done this several times, what's going on? People don't like to get embarrassed, but that happens. Um, the second pickup of the season would be in September, so you go from May, then all summer, then you go from September, um... Okay, then they actually, okay, here it is for the leaves. Now, the leaves, and it, it doesn't say, it says leave program will begin November, okay, November seventh. That's done on purpose, 'cause that's when the leaves fall, if you could last that long. I always had a problem with that, because if my leaves fall before, before November, they fall in September, what am I gonna do? I'm gonna bag them up and, and then put a stick around, or if I don't do that and I, and I leave it out in front of my house, now it goes to the neighbor's house, now he complaining that your leaves went into his yard. So that's something that we should really look at, and I'm, I'm saying we, talking about trustees and stuff, because you, you need to do several pickups. 'Cause you can't, years ago, we used to have dumpsters, how, how many people remember that, that we had dumpsters? And it was all within the, in the neighborhood, you used to be able to take things like that in your area, take it up there and dump it. We don't do that no more. Why, I don't know, but that was a good thing that happened back in that day, it'd be the money too. But I'm, but it could, it could be the money, but we also paying the garbage bill, so let's negotiate, why did they stop doing it and they're doing it now? 'Cause it enhanced, but then again, I know why it stopped, because the contractors that came out and rehabbing homes instead of taking it to the dump where they pay, they put it there at nighttime, one o'clock in the morning. Come out there, they dropped the dumpster off yesterday at three o'clock in the afternoon, next morning it's full. And now the resident put a thing in there, so, that's, but those are some of the things that I'm just letting you guys know, that we had at once upon a time. We can bring them back, but we have to, you have to have those things at your forefront, this is what you wanna do. You know, a lot of the things that we're doing, some of them I don't agree with, some of them I think we need to do, these, this is your, you want, you wanna live in an area where you feel safe, where you feel everyone's trying to take care, and if not, they get penalized, 'cause you're doing it. Now, there's only one thing that, I don't know if anyone knows, does anyone know about the rule of, of, um, shoveling snow on your sidewalk? Okay?
I shovel the snow on my sidewalk every time it snowed. The last time just fuck killed me, when it was not the fuck, it was that sleet that came down, we had four inches of sleet. But I shovel mine from one end, my white line to the other end, and I am the only one that-
I was gonna say that, you know why? If you touch the snow on your sidewalk and someone gets hurt, you're liable. But if you never touch it and someone gets hurt, that's mother nature.
But it's important is that we need to, we have to keep our sidewalks clean.
Where's that order at? Cause I've never seen that one. In that case, have three quarters of people in the village, if they're, are fine. I'm serious, but if you don't touch the snow, if you attempt to try to clean your sidewalk and you don't do it all, someone falls, you're liable, that's your mortgage insurance. Just like, just like the grass on the other side of the sidewalk, if you let, up here like that, can they give you a ticket? Does anyone know, they can give you a ticket if you, now you cut the grass in front of your house, but the, the, the parkway side, will you get a ticket if they, if they don't, um, if you don't cut that grass?
I thought we have to maintain it.
No. Belongs to the city. Belongs to the city.
But they won't come out and cut it.
No, they don't have it, so that may, you cut it for what parents say, you cut that so your house doesn't look like crap. They look like crap, but I've heard people get tickets. I would suggest nobody doing that because, I mean, that's kind of crazy not to cut the grass on the, uh, park side, that is part of, you know, making your home look good, but you don't own that. And same thing with water. You own all of that up to where your main is located, so if you get a water break in your yard, that's on you, same thing with sewer. Does anyone here have that sewer, um, insurance? One? Oh, come on, guys, that's the best thing since life break. If you're, if you have to dig up your yard, it's gonna cost you a, at least just for a small break, about fifteen hundred. That's because they know it's supply and demand, you can't go out there without it. You gotta have the village come out and cut the water off so you don't continue to keep building, now you got no water in your house, you wanna get this done so you can go back to use the bathroom and stuff. But if you have a, 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 a corporation or company, you can call them and tell them to come out here and fix my, I think it's a small deductible. That's something that, you know, you should talk about, at, at least, because if your home is getting old, if your home is fifty years old, forty years old, they might wanna think about that. But you might wanna think about it, see, I know where you live at, your, your pipes are still relatively, relatively new, but what about the ones that homes are fifty years old or older? 'Cause you don't, because they're not, they're not, um, plastic, I mean, not yet, they're not plastic pipes, those are regular clay pipes. So there's something to think about, those are some of the things you should think about. Any more questions, if not, then I'm gonna cut this off. Uh-oh, she's stopping y'all, please.
I, I haven't thought about it and, um, I don't understand it totally. When, um, trustee Jones is trying to get this summer program going, um, for the kids, and I know that you have a, um, open gym coming up soon, um, which is fantastic, but my question... Where is the asbestos in that building? To what degree is it in there? Has anybody done anything to have somebody that knows what they're doing come out and check it out to see what the next step is to correcting the problem? Somebody with a respiratory problem, I, this is the last thing I would want for any of our kids or the adults that are volunteering or working over there. Um, it's, it's an extremely dangerous thing and I would like to know, are, is anybody concerned? Is anybody doing anything? That's it.
Okay, I'm, I'm not gonna speak for trustee Jones, like I said, after the meeting, that's a very good question you can ask him. Because, um, it's something that he has, he, he asked that question yesterday at the board meeting. And I'll let him tell you what, um, answer he got, but he's been diligently on it because he wants to start a program in the summer. So he has to know, plus he has a person there that works there, so they have to know. So I'll let him explain that to you after, right out there, and also, if anybody wants to come, tell the kids, Saturday, come out for open gym. Come out and register for the summer program. And I'm just gonna, I don't wanna take his thunder, but I'll let him tell you. Okay, well, I don't wanna step on his toes. Um, he has, it may, he may have a surprise, I don't know, I haven't heard anything more about it, but it may be something where you may not have to pay. So he's trying to work on that too, he's trying to work where the residents may not have to pay, but he's gonna explain that to you. And like I said, if he gets enough, then he's gonna need a lot more, um, volunteers. You can take your kids away every day from nine o'clock to three o'clock, get fed twice a day, free. What more can you-
I have people that are retired, can you maybe help?
Well, you put it this way when you do that. Them people that are retired.
Maybe, uh-
Oh, maybe.
Retired, can maybe help Mr. Jones to get his program, I think he's ready to be.
I'll speak to you later. With that being said, um, I thank everyone for coming out. Um, I hope, I hope that you, that you at least learned a little more than you did before you got here. Um, there were some great questions and, um, continue to stay involved in your village, this is your village, this is not mine or this is your village. And our next one would be, is always, there always are, tell your people, tell any friends, always the third Wednesday of every month here at seven o'clock. Thank you.